I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, September 12th, 2016, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there are some items in the table file.
Yes, in your table file you'll see the presentation for this evening's Technology Services Update from Director Kim Bruski. You'll see some additional personality items, including appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, leave of absent request, resignations, and an enrollment report.
Exciting enrollment.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School Board to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes for the regular school board meeting held on Monday, August 22nd, 2016. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, August 22nd, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman.
We don't have any formal announcements this evening, but just wanted to give a brief report. Several of the items are items for information, but a great first week of school. I had a chance to be at every building last week for at least a little bit, including the very soggy start of the day at the middle school and got to watch traffic coming into our new middle school driveway. Talked about that a little bit. Was able to visit a number of buildings, really see smiling kids, even despite the rain. Very excited to come, and I think all the reports that we're hearing is a very good first week.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there any other comments anyone would like to add? Okay. I just want to remind board members tonight, when you do speak, asking questions or discussion, to be sure that you pull the microphone pretty close so that for anyone who wants to view the meeting, they'll be able to hear discussion. So, okay, we'll move on to items for discussion. We have several tonight. The first is the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee Report. I'll just start with a brief overview, and then Ellen Iverson will be presenting the process that the subcommittee used. So, just to recap, as you recall, we had a discussion in our May 23rd school board meeting where we had talked about forming a subcommittee to review our current superintendent evaluation form. It's a form that had been used for quite a long time, at least 12-plus years. So, during the superintendent search process as a board, we had discussed the fact that it might be a really good time to look at our current superintendent evaluation for possible modification. And it was actually good timing because recently the Minnesota School Board Association and the Minnesota Association of School Administrators had jointly reviewed and developed evaluation process guidelines for school districts. So, it was perfect timing for us as a board to do that. So, in June, the subcommittee of Fritz Bogot, Ellen Iverson, and myself were appointed to the subcommittee. So, we had been working on this since June, and Ellen will provide an overview of the superintendent evaluation process timeline and form that you had in your packets, and we'll take questions and discussion.
Sure. So, as Julie said, we thought it would be good to...
Flip it the other way, close up. Yep.
Okay.
You're good.
We thought it would be good to take it... There we go. The MSBA and MASA suggestions, and what I want to do is just kind of walk you through some of the changes. So, one of them that is from their suggestions, their recommendations, was the goal setting piece. And we really liked the idea. We're having DEPAC set goals. We have goals in the continuous improvement plans. We're asking the PLCs to have goals. So, we liked the idea of the superintendent evaluation, including that aspect. What we thought was missing, though, is that we are used to evaluating on many core pieces such as financial stewardship, community engagement, and we didn't want to lose those. And we also didn't want the superintendent to feel like the goals had to incorporate some of those elements. So, we liked the idea of keeping our form, some of the key points that we had, but adding that goal setting piece to it. So, on the very last page of your packet, you will notice that Superintendent Hillman included the three goals that he would like to be including if we adopt the superintendent evaluation process, that these would be the three goals. This is a little different, and as I walk you through the timeline, this is not the timeline that we would have, but because we're looking at this in the fall, this is a little bit different. And I think when I get done talking through this, we'll have Dr. Hillman talk a little bit more about his goals here. The other thing I wanted to call your attention to is that we're suggesting that we add a mid-year evaluation to our process timeline. So, in the past, board members know that we've always evaluated the superintendent on an annual basis. What we liked about this is to be able to provide some formative feedback. While we all frequently have conversations and meet with the superintendent, this is an opportunity to be more intentional and for it to come from everyone, and not only to hear from us when there's concern, but also be able to talk about some of the things that we see that are going really well in mid-year. And then, I guess the last piece I wanted to make sure that I talked about is, when you look at the form, there's two scales. So, if you go to page three, one scale deals with the mid-year that I just mentioned, and then the other is the end-of-the-year summative, which is very similar to what we've used in the past. If you look through the items, mission and vision is new, the district goals are new. Many of the other items are the same, but we've weighted them a little differently. And what we did is we wanted to make sure the superintendent's job description was encapsulated, and what we heard from the community last spring when we did the superintendent search, we got a lot of feedback of what they saw that role. And one of the things you'll notice at the number five is there's many more items on that. So, it's weighted a little bit differently because that number five is the liaison between the community and the school district, and that deals with the community. It has to do with having respectful working relations with the teachers, and then with the media. So, those are the pieces that we heard last spring. Overall, the form is about the same in length. It's just weighted a little differently. And then, the last other piece that would be new is that we wanted to make sure that we had the, if you look at the very last page, overseas charter schools, that's a new piece, and that is part of our, in our application to be an authorizer for charter schools. They'd asked that we more intentionally include that in superintendent evaluation. So, that's a piece that's coming directly from MDE. So, those are some of the changes in the form. Then, in terms of the timeline on page one, if you want to look, so as I said, we've got Matt's goals, Dr. Hillman's goals in there right now, but what we really would see is that this would flow into our natural process, where with the superintendent and DEPAC, we always have our goals that come to us in May to evaluate, that we would look at that happening in the spring, and that would become part of the annual evaluation, that we would still do the annual evaluation in the summer for the previous year, and then we'd be looking to do the formative mid-year in winter. And that would also be a nice opportunity, if we have new members joining the school board, to become familiar with the evaluation, because often when you're a new school board member and you don't see it until the summer, and then you're expected to provide that six-month evaluation, that this is another opportunity there. So, I think that gives you an overview of some of the changes we're suggesting. And I guess I would also like to say that with whatever we adopt, we thought it would be really important in a year to revisit this, because we are suggesting changes, and we've been doing the same sort of process for, as Julie said, as long as, you know, 12 years. Noel could probably tell us exactly how long, but for quite a few years. And we don't know that we'll get it perfect the first time, but we want to try some things, and then we could take stock in a year to see where we're at. But I guess what we would like is to get Dr. Hillman a chance to talk about the goals and then open it up for discussion and questions.
Well, I just want to thank the subcommittee for their work, because I believe that we have a really strong evaluation system that will not only be transparent to the community, you know, but also provide me with the kind of professional feedback that I need to be the most effective superintendent possible. I really appreciate the opportunity to submit goals. I also appreciate the mid-year formative assessment opportunity. If you think about not only all of those items that you had mentioned, Ellen, our building principals as part of their evaluation also have a mid-year formative component. They also have goals. If you think about our new teacher development and evaluation system in its third year, the student achievement portion is a goal-setting and reflection process. So, what I appreciate is bringing the superintendent's evaluation into alignment, not perfect replication, but into alignment with what is expected of our other folks in the district. I think it's important. If I expect them to do that, I think they should be able to expect the same of me. When it comes to the goals, I have written three SMART goals for your consideration for the 2016-17 year, and as we move forward, I would expect these goals to become more sophisticated. You know, as we've said, we're at a crossroad, so to speak, in terms of with a strategic planning process underway, a master facilities plan coming to fruition as well. So, the three goals that I'm asking you to consider would be, number one, that the Northfield Public Schools will adopt an updated mission, vision, and strategic plan by October 30th, 2016, and begin implementation no later than June 1, 2017. So, that talks about my shepherding the current strategic planning process to its fruition and asking you to approve that by the end of October. The second goal is around the long-range master facilities plan. We've been spending quite a bit of time over the past few years being very intentional about talking about our facilities, and yet I will tell you, when people ask me about the school, almost always it's the number one or two question they ask me. When's that facilities plan going to be done? And unlike when you'd be operating from a position of reactiveness, we are being proactive. And so, again, though, suggesting that we complete that long-range master facilities planning process this year by November 30th. The third goal would be, Northfield Public Schools will continue to address the district's opportunity gap by recommending a core curriculum for social-emotional learning by June 1, 2017. And when we think about the achievement gap or the opportunity gap, we think of a number of different pieces, and the word "continue" is very intentional. The district has been working very hard for a long time to increase student achievement and to reduce the opportunity gap that exists in our data. When we think about the feedback that we've had through thought exchange and so far through the strategic planning process, the social-emotional learning piece continues to bubble to the top, because I think people recognize that if we're going to approach an academic achievement gap, we have to look beneath and see what are those things that are foundational to that. And I think there's quite a bit of agreement around the fact that social-emotional learning plays a huge role in students' academic achievement. So, I don't believe that that's a surprise to anyone, that a goal would be to look for a social-emotional curriculum and make that recommendation by the end of the school year. I also recognize that there will be inevitably goals that come out of the strategic planning process and the facilities process that I will be responsible for, and certainly expect to be held accountable for those as well. So, I submit these goals to you for your consideration, and as I said, I believe over the next several years, these goals will become more sophisticated. It is the first time that we're having the superintendent set a goal, and if you think about that, that's very interesting. It's the only position in the district that affects a tremendous amount of people, and the goals that I select, I think, and that you approve are very important to make sure that we have some synergy around this. I'm obviously not the one that's going to be completing all of it. There's going to be a number of people who will be doing that, and my goal is to help lead them and shepherd that process along. So, those are the goals that I have submitted to you, and I ask for your consideration in them.
Okay, excellent. I'd like to have the discussion in two parts. So, let's, if we could first have questions, discussion around the evaluation form and the process timeline, and I will move to questions specific to Dr. Hillman's goals. So, is there anyone who has some questions or discussion around the modified form and the outlined process? Rob?
Let's see if I can do this.
Perfect.
So, looking at some of the questions that are on the evaluation form, some of them are very easy for any board member to answer. For example, provides a detailed agenda for board meetings. I mean, I think we can all, because we're at meetings and we get an agenda, we can answer that one. But there are some, like, encourages development, learning about, and sharing of best practices with other districts. That's not something that might necessarily, that might not necessarily come out during a board meeting or during the course of any particular year. So, it seems to me there needs to be a way of gathering some of this information or getting the superintendent to address some of these questions, because some of them I find, in the past, found difficult to answer just because they don't come up in the natural course of the school board's work.
Sure, sure.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, if you...
Sure, or I can as well. Sure. So, one of the things that Julie and I have had the opportunity to do is see how board members respond. So, one of the things we intentionally did is we did try to remove the items where routinely board members had selected UA unable to answer. So, we hopefully got, those are no longer in front of you, but we recognize that there probably are items in here where you may feel like they are less visible to what's going on. We kept some of them on because we felt like we should be more visible to the lights, and we had a sort of discussion about, you know, they were not necessarily items that people had routinely picked unable to answer, but we could see that board members might feel like it's not quite as transparent to us. But we also thought about our role as a board and whether we should have some visibility to these pieces. So, I guess maybe if there were specific items that we wanted to think, consider whether, you know, that we really, it's not going to be as transparent, and it's going to be in the same position where you feel like you're going to be unable to answer, we certainly would want to remove those. So, I guess, Rob, if you think it's an item that you think we shouldn't, you know, probably isn't really something we'd be visible to, then...
It's not necessarily that it should be removed, but that there should be some process for
Okay.
Bringing out that information. If it's important information, we should be able to evaluate how the superintendent does on it, but it has to be something that will become visible to the board, I think.
No, exactly. Fritz, you had a comment?
My comment was that some of the things that there wouldn't necessarily be visibility around, we should probably get added to the rotation of presentations to the board over the course of the year, so that there becomes visibility around it. So, there might be some of these questions that are worth dropping, but if there are ones that we wish we knew the answer but don't presently have a way of knowing the answer, let's just get them added to the agenda several months out to make sure that we hear about them.
Yeah, as the one example that you gave, Rob, about sharing best practice with the districts, the first thing that came to my mind was the work of our Northfield High School Ninth Grade Academy. And over the past two years, they have held workshops for other schools. They've had 23 or 24 other school districts come to Northfield to learn how to replicate to the best of the ability of the Ninth Grade Academy. We've had the academy present before, but it's time to bring the academy back, because I think that that's a good example of that particular. And you're right, there will be ups and downs with that as we develop programming and implement it. So, it will be a piece that will be, there's times where I think it can be very visible and other times where it just might be in a lull period for a short amount of time, because everything doesn't work on a calendar basis. So, you wish it did, but not everything does.
No, that's an excellent question, Rob. And the other piece, I think we tried to really recognize where we think the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent, you know, what are the important ones, and that they be put there for evaluation and review. So, again, not necessarily always be there on a consistent basis in doing it, but that it's an important piece. So, in other words, we're sort of teeing up what we think are some of the important aspects of a superintendent's roles and responsibilities. And so, having that as part of that is a good working document for Dr. Hillman and superintendents. So, Ellen?
And so, maybe to close that piece is that if there are items that we want to flag, that we want to make sure either get added to the agenda, or also things to consider, like whatever we adopt that we'll want to really, you know, look in a year to see how they worked. And so, some of these items may be ones that we, you know, decide are not really appropriate.
Do you have any other follow-up comments, Rob?
Well, I guess, just in general, I mean, things like provides for the educational needs of all students. I mean, everybody in the district is supposedly doing that. So, it's, some of these, it's hard to untangle what is the superintendent, you know, what is their piece of this bigger thing, you know? I mean, how much can we attribute to the superintendent's work, and how much is, so if the Ninth Grade Academy comes and gives a presentation about their work, sort of providing a model for other districts, how much of that do we say, oh, the superintendent did a good job of hiring these people long ago who did this great thing? I mean, so it's hard to untangle the performance of the entire district from the superintendent's piece of that.
I guess, do you? No.
Who else in the district has responsibility to evaluate superintendent?
There, we, it is a sole responsibility.
And let me clarify that or speak to that. When I was manager, when I was manager of facilities, my work as a manager involved half a dozen different organizations that were recipients of the work that I and my department was doing. And so, those other departments were other recipients and had a chance to evaluate my performance. I'm wondering if that's the case for the principals of the building and so on, that he engages with in addition to the board.
Well, I think if we were to look at that sort of a process where we would have, you know, stakeholders' process input, that would have to be something we could look at doing. The way it's set up, ultimately, it's the responsibility of the
Yes.
School Board to evaluate the superintendent. But if we, if there's some interest around having some sort of process where there's input that we would want to have in terms of our evaluation process, we would need to look at that. We haven't obviously addressed that here, but that if there was interest from board members of doing that, we could certainly put a process together that would incorporate that element.
Thank you.
Margaret?
Just exactly what Noel had said. I was wondering what other groups, also because a teacher's perspective or a principal's perspective would certainly be different than my perspective of any. What process do we go through, say, when a principal is evaluated? Do we, Matt?
Yeah. So, building principals use a tool that we have developed that was actually recognized by the Minnesota Department of Education as a promising practice, where there has, we've done in the past with direct surveys to parents and to staff. This past year, we attempted to use the first thought exchange data. So, the building principals take that data about their performance in their school, and they use a reflective document in which they actually reflect upon their performance in terms of the stakeholder feedback that they have received. So, we have used that particular piece in the past, and our teachers also use a student engagement survey at all levels. And so, nearly every teacher in the district, unless I'm a special education teacher who maybe might be a speech-language pathologist, where, you know, a student engagement survey doesn't make a lot of sense. So, we do have a number of things where that has worked, and frankly, my entire administrative career, I have used some kind of 360-degree survey, which is really what you're talking about. In Northfield, when Dr. Richardson would evaluate me in my previous roles, I typically would survey the people who directly reported to me, the people who were colleagues at the same level, so basically building principals, other district-level directors. And then, in that role, I always asked the Northfield Education Association president and the member rights advocates to offer me feedback. And then, again, used a reflective practice to create basically a self-evaluation. So, that kind of thing is not anything that's new to me in terms of if that's something that's the will of the board. And, you know, my only request would be that I have an opportunity to be reflective upon that and provide a reflective document, because it isn't always about the data that comes back directly through a survey like that. It's about how the individual looks at it and says, this was really a fair piece of feedback, and here's, you know, why that happened, and here's what I might do differently the next time. There also might be portions of something like that that come back, where you have asked me to do something in particular that the feedback came positive or negative, either way. And so, I think any piece of a 360-degree or any kind of engagement survey, having that reflective component is really important, because that gets you to see how I would react to any kind of that feedback, which you're all going to see anyway, because you see how I respond to other folks anyway. But if there's something that comes back as a surprise to me through that process, I would want to know that. In all the years that I've done it, I very rarely have been surprised, both on the things that are positive about my performance and also the concerns. That's not to say that at some point there wouldn't be a surprise, but I would want to make sure it's actionable, so we can take action to correct anything should that perception or that kind of feedback be out there.
I like that idea of a 360. That sounds good. You're getting other perspectives and people who work here every single day, and I think that'd be really helpful.
And I think we should just have more dialogue around who would you like to have part of that 360, because that's the next question. As Noel had said, the people who reported to him, you know, had that opportunity. But there's also some other, you know, folks who might be, make sense to be part of that, too.
Other comments on discussion? So, if the board is leaning towards doing that sort of a component, I think maybe it would make sense for the subcommittee to meet again with Dr. Hillman, and we'll establish some criteria for that, and we'll present that at our next board meeting. And then, as a result, then, we could move the, we could add that component, and then we can move the final approval of the evaluation form and process to our first meeting in October. Okay? Good, good. Thank you. We were anxious to get feedback, and we really appreciate your feedback, and I want to just thank Ellen and Fritz for their great work on this process as well. Do you want to?
Yes.
Yes. So, now, let's go to the evaluation, or excuse me, as part of the evaluation, the goals, the superintendent goals. So, is there some specific questions for either the subcommittee or Dr. Hillman around the establishment of goals and then the specific 2016-17 goals? Okay, all right. So, we will, again, then, as you, as we move forward, then, with finalizing that last additional piece, we'll look to approve these goals then at that same time in the first meeting in October. Okay, thank you.
Meet in November or October?
October's.
October.
Yeah. So, it'll be the first meeting in October, because we'll come back at the September 26th meeting with the process for the initial process of evaluation. Okay. So, thank you. We'll move on now to the Technology Services Update, and as a reminder to board members, Kim's PowerPoint presentation was in the table file.
Not with all my pictures.
Not with all those school pictures, though.
All right. Good evening, all. Happy to be here tonight. I have to remind myself while we're sitting here that we are only on the fifth day of school. So, I'm going to keep that in mind as we go here. It's been a busy time, and we're working through a lot right now. So, I just want to start with our tech team mission. Our tech services team responds to stakeholder needs in a timely manner, providing skilled, friendly, reliable service, and that's in support of those bigger goals, the teaching and learning that's going on in our classrooms every day, and the greater district mission of providing educational excellence to all of our learners. And so, we take that pretty seriously, that when we get requests, it's something that is in need in our classrooms to keep, to keep everything moving for those teachers and for the students. To that end, I just want to pause for a moment and actually thank our tech team, because they have been flying around like crazy for the last particularly couple weeks, but even in the summer, it's been a really busy summer. So, we have Nate Knutson, our network manager, Dwayne Johnson is now network assistant. We have Bruce Divik, who's here tonight as a tech specialist. Annette Hakala is one of our new tech specialists, and Matt Roy is another new tech specialist. And then, we also have Chris Nesset as our student information system specialist. And those people have been, like I say, quite busy with requests, and those requests are coming through a new system. We've talked about the school dude system, I think, before. It's a new ticketing system that we're using that provides a really streamlined response to those staff needs. So, basically, staff members go in and submit a request, somewhat similar to before, but it is a little bit more work, and we realize that upfront, the first login for our staff members to submit a ticket takes a little bit more on their part to set up their account. But the benefits that we get far outweigh that first challenge in terms of a communication loop back to those requesters. So, once somebody submits a request, they see who it's assigned to. They see if the person has seen that and started working on it. They see any comments that the tech specialist has made on that. And then, they know where their work is at. So, you can add in that you have parts on order, and people see that, and they know somebody's helping. As opposed to the past, we had a form, but the requests would go in, and they might get responded to, and people might not even know something is fixed and it's done. And so, now, that's very well documented. There are email notifications, and just this year, we have already closed over 420 tickets. So, there are primarily six people responding to those tickets. So, that's a pretty hefty number, and they've all come in somewhere along the lines of mid-August until right now. So, and there are still probably about 80 or 85 active tickets in the system. So, it's busy, like I said. New equipment and systems, this is a year where I said we're not going to add anything new, but we're going to try to make the things that we already have in place work even better for us. So, Schoology and Skyward is a So Schoologee and Skyward is a big one. This was huge feedback from Thought Exchange that families wanted to see as well as staff members wanted to see some sort of communication between Schoologee and Skyward and we've got that working. It just came at the very end of August, so I mean, it's, it's brand new to us. But what it does is it basically pulls all of the data from Skyward and says, here, we're going to create you a user account. You're either a staff person or a student. And it knows you, it's great, and it knows your enrollment. And so all of those courses are automatically generated. A student logs in, they see their course list. Actually, one little bubble in the system was that we, we did that first sync just before the student schedules were released and they saw their schedules on Schoologee. I got a pretty quick text from the Hillman family that some information was out and we were able to stop that. But anyway, it told me it was working, so that helped. Anyway, we see that the teachers log in and they see their courses there with the students already in them. That already saves a little bit of time because they don't spend that first day of class getting kids to join their Schoologee course. And then the kid that still needs the code because they weren't there has to find it from someone else or ask the next day or somebody who comes in mid-year, that will, it resyncs every single night. So they'll be in the, in the class by the next day. And then the big part is that Schoologee grades can pass back to Skyward. And so it's an optional piece. We didn't set it up to live sync because there might be things in Schoologee that people don't want to be in the actual grade book and Skyward still is the authority of the grade. So you can choose to pass back all of the assignment information and teachers don't have to go into Skyward, create the assignment, enter all the grades there. They can create the assignment in Schoologee, grade it, pass it back to Skyward. So there was a little bit of a challenge ensuring accuracy in all the user accounts. This has been for a pretty minimal number of people. But still, some people, some of our students and some of our teachers had a little trouble logging in at first. Mostly, this was people who had the same name because the information that Schoologee used to match student information from Skyward is not the information that we already had in Schoologee. So it guessed basically onto students of the same name and we had to go through and do some cleanup on that. But all in all, we're seeing really good results with that. Oops. And like I say, that's one of the biggest requested things, so it feels good to have something that people wanted now in place. Another thing that I think is a really big success is the new art and graphics lab. It's in room V102, just down the hallway here. And the background is actually that lab. It's a beautiful space. It's nice, big and bright. It has the Macs that were originally in the art lab here at the high school. And then we've added to that the same, the same model of computer, that's a nice new computer, was also at the middle school in the music lab. And so we brought those over and we were able to fill that lab up to 32 computers. And then we had some extras that we were able to update, some of the elementary music staff who had some pretty outdated Macintosh computers that they had gotten through, through curriculum cycle process quite some time ago. And so that, we were able to provide them with an updated workstation as well. The other thing that this did is it took some of the space and some of the computers that we already had in place that weren't used for the entire day, they were used for a portion of the day in the, in the art department, and put them into a space where they could be shared and, and more widely used as opposed to creating two separate labs that wouldn't be used for the full day. So it's a very nice space. Still a couple of things going in there, but the technology is there and set up and working really well. And that entire lab runs wirelessly as well, so we don't have any network wires running around in there. New equipment that we've gotten, more new equipment. The iPad deployment, most of the times when I come to the board, I'm talking about our next phase of releases and we don't have a next phase on the horizon right now, so they're in place. We've received all three of those phases that we've talked about. Our MDM is hard at work getting all the apps out to those iPads. The App Store is no longer in use for fourth through 12th grade. Our youngest students, who are not 13 yet, don't actually have an Apple ID on their device. And we are able to deploy apps right to their iPad. I looked at our MDM a few times today, actually I've been watching it a little bit over the last week. And right now, there are about 340,000 individual pieces of content in use on the MDM. So those are app licenses that are out to our student and staff iPads. And that number grew by about 10,000 just today. I checked it earlier, it was at about 330. And then I looked again later, it was at 340. I went, wow, 10,000 pieces of content went out through that system today without us touching anything, so.
Kim, tell them what MDM stands for.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Mobile Device Management System. This is Casper that we have all talked about, I assume from all of my presentations. Thank you, Matt. And actually, the, the background there is what it looks like for students. They open up self-service and it's got rows of apps, they're sorted into categories. So distributed based on what they need. So if you are a fourth grade student, when you enroll on that iPad, it knows you are a fourth grade student and it sends you all of the content that is relevant to fourth grade that the teachers have requested. We also have some Chromebook carts in place now. The high school and Bridgewater both received a Chromebook cart through the capital allocations process from last year. So those came in this summer. And they're used as basically an extra checkout station that would bring full keyboards, kind of a computer setup, you can do testing on them, to a classroom, much more flexible than something like a computer lab here, something that could be even split into two classrooms or into a department to use throughout their department for a project or something of that sort. So those Chromebook carts are here, they're in place. And then we got one more kind of last minute. When we added that section of fifth grade at Sibley, that teacher went into an existing computer lab as a classroom space. I, I'm guessing most of you have seen some of our intermediate level classrooms and, and they don't look like computer labs. It was not a very suitable space for, for a classroom at the start of the year. And the teachers in that fifth grade team, as well as Scott and others at Sibley have done a really great job of supporting Shelley, the new teacher there, and getting her set up. And I went and said, well, what do you think about pulling those computers out? There is one lab that is aging anyway and would likely be up for replacement next year. So what do you think about taking it out, consider that space no longer a lab, consider it a, a space to be used for a class, for, for offices, for meeting space, whatever it might be. And we do a Chromebook cart that is much more flexible, like I say, something that can go to a grade level area and all of the four teachers in that grade level could use it. Something that could go to a classroom for, for testing in the classroom as opposed to bringing a class to the lab. And in the long run, it really could, could meet the needs of what they have used a computer lab for in the past, except for much more flexibly. So provides that technology access to the teachers and to the students, technology access that they wouldn't have had for this year, really, if a classroom is in that lab. And moving forward, if it's something that they're accustomed to and that is working well, that space is freed up, which space is a premium, so. New equipment still continued, kind of a list of things that we've got, 3D printers. We had Steve Taggart do a summer learning series session on 3D printing and we had teachers design and print their own objects within a two-hour session. They didn't finish printing during that two-hour session, but there's actually items that our, our teachers started designing and printing. And my son Calvin was pretty excited, he did a little bit of that. The Sibley gym now has a presentation system that they are using every day, all day. I heard that they ran out of batteries in their wireless mic already, but loving it. Something where they're able to project videos for opening activities with their kids, something where they can have assemblies in the gym, they have a nice sound system, it goes throughout the entire gym, it has a couple of microphones, it has the ability, they could hook it right up to their iPad and play something like a YouTube clip that they've saved, a video that they've made, whatever it is, and they are quite, quite happy with that. The middle school auditorium also got a new projector and wireless inputs, so our presenters can now present from any space in that auditorium. In the past, had to have your computer up in the booth to present. It now has a wireless unit, so you could present from a podium on the stage from someplace in the middle and still use the projector from the booth wirelessly. It's a pretty nice setup there as well. The media center labs, you see them quite often, they've all been replaced and they are nice new computers, they're working nice and quickly for students and we'll even have some classes taught here. Statistics is one of those. Upgrades to the wireless network, Nate has been quite busy with that. Most of our buildings have seen some updates to the, to the Wi-Fi where they have a stronger, more robust Wi-Fi signal throughout the buildings. And so that's some of the work that nobody notices in the background, but their devices work and it's good. Replacement of staff computers and smartboards, just maintaining the equipment that we already have in place and a couple of new ones along the way. So some of the work that we've done in the tech team collaboratively, the summer wellness challenge is one of those things. I know Stephanie Strummy talked about that when she gave her update in the spring. We did pull off a, a little bit of a summer wellness challenge. It wasn't quite what we were hoping for it to be, but it is a really good start for something that can happen throughout the school year and into next year. We had 108 participants, which isn't too bad for a first shot at something that we thought up in the spring. And, and, and some fun doing that and we have a few prizes to, to hand out still to some students for that. But Stephanie plans to take that group and form a student wellness committee with what we started with that Schoologee group and invite some kids along to have a, a student wellness committee moving forward. And that's a, that's a starting point for that. We also do have six weeks of activities that we created, so we have some things on deck for next year, so that's kind of nice. For fall workshop, the tech team was able to provide technology support in each of our schools, as well as some of the sessions during the choice times here. Teachers have Wednesday and Thursday of workshop week to choose sessions at the high school. Elementary school, teachers were here on Thursday of that week. And we did provide sessions throughout that time for just drop-in tech questions or Google support, Schoologee support, pieces like that. And then we also worked with Mary Grace and with Nancy Cluver to, to generate all of those CEUs through Google without any paper certificates handed out. So that was a kind of fun system. I've worked a little bit with Bridgewater STEAM. I don't want to take anything from Bridgewater on this because they have created this and are moving forward with it, but STEAM being science, technology, engineering, art and mathematics. And they are moving forward with some carts, mobile carts in their building to provide some learning opportunities in multiple means, methods of learning with circuit building and with, with building art kinds of projects. Some of them have Legos, some of them have magnet kinds of tools to work with, lots of different things for students to actually construct. Sibley has done some really great work this fall around the five Cs. They have the four Cs as we know them of collaboration, creativity, critical thinking and communication. And they have added in connections on theirs and they did a big Olympics theme to kick off the year with those five Cs and they took the rings and made them all Cs and had all sorts of events that people participated in. And these are the kinds of things that draw right back to some of the books that we've read with administrators, some of the work that we've done at TIES last year, some of the learning that went on with the innovator's mindset from George Kuros that DCSDC is also reading. That, that kind of sprung, that was a springboard for that five Cs movement that, that Sibley's got going. And they are going through that throughout the year. So that's a nice little piece, very fun to work with them. And I know some of our other buildings have some things that are coming into place. I was just talking with people at Greenville today about their plans for professional development and how we might be able to support them throughout the year, some ongoing work, probably nine different professional development days and staff meetings there that we could help out with. So those things are coming into place, like I say, in all of our other buildings too, as well as the, the high school and the middle school, some ongoing support there too. The PLC process, we also helped with that where in DCSDC, we took a group of us to help take the PLC process and add it into Google. And so now we have some forums where we can actually track data. I know Mary Grace has shared some of that with you already as well. But I'm pretty excited about those because they can actually pull some meaningful content from our, from our PLCs and what we're doing in those to, to make the process a little bit smoother and a little bit about the work, a little bit more about the work that's going on and less about the paperwork is the goal. Continuous growth is always important to us, so we provide a lot of professional development. The summer learning series, this year we did two days in June, two in August. So over those four days, we had 15 different sessions and we had over 50 people come to those. So summertime professional learning, it's always hard to decide, to determine what's going to be the most helpful to the teachers. That's what we did, did this past summer. We do have before and after-school sessions starting up again this week. I will get one at the high school and one at the middle school specifically about the Schoologee and Skyward grading piece. Because I know that teachers who want to take advantage of that need to do some configuration setup to get that all underway. And while it's been shared once in email and also during the workshop, not everybody had a chance to attend. And so to have one more opportunity for those teachers to see that. And then tomorrow, I'll be at Sibley in the morning, helping the, the K3 and specialist teachers with their iPad setup and how to use those in their classrooms. We'll do the TIES conference again this December. It's always a great idea and energy generator. Tomorrow will be my first Tuesday tech tip. It happens to be about keyboard shortcuts on the iPads. I shared it with somebody today in second grade at Greenville and they just about, well, I don't know, they almost hugged me probably, very excited about keyboard shortcuts. So that's tomorrow's Tuesday tech tip. And then you have received the teach talk in the past, that'll start coming out at the end of this week again as well. So whatever we can do to kind of keep giving ideas and keep our teachers just thinking, moving forward, having an opportunity to go, oh, I was going to ask about that and come with a question even that we can provide support. Looking forward, we will do the Bright Bites survey again this year and we have some data from that. I'm not going to go deep into the data, but Bright Bites uses the case, kind of this formula they have, and it includes these elements of classroom technology use, access to technology, skills around using technology and the environment and how it supports technology. Last year was the second year that we did the survey and we did see increases in all of those areas. The access and the skills are the front runners, which really makes sense if you look at those. Those who have access to technology and skills in using the technology are going to be able to implement it in their classroom and have an environment that, that supports one another in using their technology. So those areas, we are pretty high. This, this is an actual quick snapshot of, of our dashboard in Bright Bites and the, the places that we're looking to move forward beyond those ends of the classroom integration and the environment. Like I say, we did improve in all of those and how Bright Bites gives the data in the past year and we're looking to really move those ends forward again. We're very strong in the beliefs that people feel like, yes, this can make a difference and it can enhance learning for our students. Those elements that are in the classroom and environment pieces are the, the things you see bulleted there, the integration of the four Cs in teaching and learning, the policies and procedures and practices regarding technology use, professional learning around technology use and the systems that we use for assessment and feedback to our students. And that's what I've got for you tonight for, for an update. So if there are questions, I'd sure take those.
Excellent, thank you. Board members, questions or comments?
I'm just wondering, one of the things that was always talked about with the iPads three years ago whenever was that it was going to make backpacks much lighter because you wouldn't, you'd be replacing those heavy textbooks. And I'm wondering how that's going, whether the electronic textbooks are getting better or if anything's moved on that.
Yeah, actually, I think we have had, I don't know of any troubles that we have had in distributing iBooks to our high school students this year, which is wonderful. In the past, we've had a couple of struggles with some of them, but, so we do have world history and American history that have been using an iBook for the past few years, continue to use that as an iBook. I have also talked to our media specialists and seen that we have textbooks now, the backpacks might be lighter and the shelves in the media center, not so much. So we have textbooks that we have purchased and we still use the content from those textbooks, but we have it in mostly a digital format and our kids don't actually need the textbook, but we're not certain copyright-wise if we can throw those away and still distribute that information to all of our students. So there's, there's a little bit of a question there and a little bit of a change in how a textbook industry functions because you could at this point purchase a class set and provide the content to everyone and clearly a textbook company doesn't want us to, to do that. So I would say, yes, the distribution of books to students on a grand scale has got, continued to decrease. It's not zero books and I don't think it should be zero books, but I, I would say, yes, the backpacks are actually getting lighter at this point.
I would say that it has gotten better since the beginning, but Kim has really nailed it on the head that we've made some really good progress. In fact, there's a number of courses that use some kind of digital material. I think you're seeing more and more all the time. However, the textbook publishing companies are still really, I would say they're at a similar point to where the music industry was a year or so after the iPod came out. And I think you're seeing, there are textbook companies that have replicated their, basically they've sold you seven years' worth of codes at the same time so that they, they can keep their financial model rolling. One of the pieces that we continue to look at that I think is getting better all the time is open source content. In fact, that continues to be a push from the federal level. We have looked at some things like CK-12 Flexbooks, that's one example. There are a couple of different providers where they are working with universities. There's one that now the name is escaping me that is out of Rice University where again, they're looking at how can we put some of the best minds at universities together and put copyright-free, open source material out for educators. And so I think it's getting better. It is not as fast as many people have predicted. And I would say there are some kids, my own children and some others who I've seen have had semesters where they haven't had a textbook at all, physical textbook, and then semesters where just because of their class schedule, they have had a physical textbook for every class. So there are things like we've, in fact, in mathematics area, there were some digital content that content that we had actually gotten when we bought the textbooks way pre-iPad. There were some CD things and those kinds of things. Our biology department has, has used an online textbook. There's a number of other things. The problem is there's no universal way yet that companies are doing that. I think continuing to move forward in one direction, I continue to like to see us go, is encouraging and working with our teachers to create their own content, whether that be through summer curriculum writing, where we pay people to develop their own curriculum like some places have pulling from different open-source areas. We're better than we were, but it isn't as fast as we had hoped it would be.
Excellent question. Other questions? Margaret?
This might be more of a question for Matt. Given all the data that we know about kids and screen time, how are we balancing that for especially the young kids, about making sure that we're not adding to this issue of too much screen time and creating problems that we don't see coming necessarily?
Sure, I think the most important thing to think there is that when those initial screen time recommendations were out several years ago, five, six years ago, maybe even longer, the research had not caught up to the technology. And in fact, if you look at the American Pediatrics Association, they have actually changed their recommendations, and they are starting to differentiate because research is telling us that there's a difference in screen time. It used to be painted with a brush that all screen time has a negative effect, is absolutely not true. Passive screen time ha, can have a negative effect, so things like television shows and things like that are still shown that they would like to lessen that. But if you are engaged in active screen time, like problem solving or reading on the screen or specific video work that you're then being asked to think cognitively about afterwards, the research is starting to show that active screen time, when my brain is engaged, is something that's very different than the passive screen time. So we, I think the, the frame of the screen time discussion is changing significantly, and medical researchers are telling us that as well. And I don't know if, Kim, you have any, I know you've been looking at those pieces too.
I would've said pretty much what you said, I think. Interestingly enough, today at Greenville, I had lunch with the kindergarteners, and I, I have a kindergartner, so that was an easy task. And one of the, one of the students that I was talking to, I said, why are you going to, we were talking about pictures, school pictures are tomorrow. I said, are you excited for your picture and do you, do you know what you're going to wear for your picture? And he said, I'm not having my picture taken. He said, I'll just put it on Facebook. And I was like, who? You're a kindergarten student and where are you going to get your picture? And you think about how our, how our kids are growing up and interacting and the kinds of things that you would ask. But, you know, my kids came to, to work with me and picked up a phone and said, Mom is making a sound. It's a dial tone, guys, you know, like it's, they haven't heard it before, and they live in a world that is so different and things are, they use technology every day. And so I think there are some unanticipated outcomes from that, to be sure, and I think what, what Matt said about the active versus passive is our, our biggest concern, and then right behind that would be blue light before bed.
That was part of my question too, is the, the screen time and the blue light being the...
There are now apps, and there are actually native settings on the iPad to turn off, to, to change the lighting so it doesn't actually have the blue light anymore.
Really?
There are.
Be good for adults, too.
Yes. I try to hold myself to the same standards that I set for my kids, and when you think about your, where your phone is in the house, those things all come into play.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, great question. Noel?
I'm nearly hesitant to ask this at a public meeting, but can you share a little bit about security and backup? What are the risks that high, that public pools have?
In terms of, are you all work?
Pick a subject.
Pick a subject? Well, okay, so our, I would consider that our data is, is pretty secure. Now, we use Google very heavily, and I have thought about what happens if Google loses all of our stuff. That has crossed my mind. I, I don't lose sleep over it thankfully, because that would be, I would be in a world of hurt if that happened, but we, anything that is on our district servers is backed up on tape as well, so we encourage people with their Google Drives to often back them up. They do have services to download everything off of your drive and store it on an external drive or in some text formats that aren't the whole rich version of your Google Doc, but that could be restored to that. So we encourage the backups, but, but most of our stuff is there. Anything that's stored locally on your computer is at risk of, of loss. And then anything that you store on our, on our district server is, is backed up very well. It's in, it's multiple times backed up, so loss of data there is not, not an issue. And security of that data, I, I don't think we have any, any security threat on our network at this point in time. Your, your Google account, the biggest, the biggest issues would be people fishing for information. And those kinds of things get pulled out pretty well. Interestingly enough, we have a password management system through the district, and if I send out an email to somebody and say, log into our, our password management system and I put the web address, it flags the email and says, the, it gives people a red alert and says, this message may be trying to gather information from you, so I can't actually use the, the link in there, I have to just link the text, and that works. And so our email does actually catch a lot of that for us. I would say that Google's filters are better than filters that we have had in the past.
Okay, good question also. Ellen?
I just had a comment, so I want to thank you for the report and thinking about all the devices and how you quickly reacted to Sibley, just knowing that the airline had had some issues this summer. You know, we are really grateful that we're not canceling flights here the first five days of school, so thank you for the report, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about the four Cs in the future. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Yes, I, I echo what Ellen said, absolutely. I mean, you guys do incredible work, and I love the way that you have been so responsive to, to what the community has asked. So is there a plan to communicate the upgrade of Schoology and Skyward as parents had wanted to, parents, or will, so that they know that that, that's available?
That is a very good question. I can add that to my plan to, to send out a message to the community regarding that.
And I think some of that is, it's so new, you know, in terms of really just in the, I think one of the things that we've tried over the years is to give our staff a good chance to figure that out before we start telling people that it's something that's available. Though, as you mentioned, you know, within two hours of that button being pressed, high school kids had already figured it out. You talk about raising problem solvers, we've done it, you know, in terms of kids finding those schedules on Schoology. And I also, if you think about, the, the tech staff is about the same as it was when I first arrived in Northfield in terms of the numbers, and you think about the number of devices that have been added, the amount of support that's been provided to teachers, and I really think that our teachers deserve an incredible amount of credit. If you think about how far we have come, you know, since we first started talking about trying to integrate technology at a one-to-one level, I am incredibly proud of our staff. You've seen some things here at the board level in terms of the Bridgewater presentation that was given a couple of months ago about what they're doing in terms of integrating one-to-one iPads and just that, the access, it's a chicken or egg piece, you know, will teachers use it? Well, we know they won't use it if they don't have it in the classroom, and a lot of people have really gone out of their comfort zone. And I've had a number of comments, in fact, I had someone stop me at Rotary recently and said, you know, three years ago when I went to the middle school open house and saw people using technology when they were trying with the first year of the iPad to what it is now when I went to the same sixth grade thing three years later, he was incredibly proud to be a member of the community, was proud of our teaching staff for the risks that they've taken and the work that they've done. And I think it's really a testament to the work that Kim has done in terms of trying to really help folks. It's a testament to our media specialists who work closely with teachers every day, and it's a, it's a testament to our teachers showing a growth mindset and saying, you know what, I'm willing to try this because I think the measurement coming back is so worth it, and it, we really, we have, we have a way, long ways to go yet. We've got a long way to go, but we have come so far, and I am so proud of our staff, and I really appreciate Kim's leadership in this particular area. And her stewardship, because she was able to pay for those Chromebooks for Sibley because she had really negotiated the price on some other projects that were planned to cost more. She did not have to change her budget at all because she had saved that money in really being very aggressive in negotiating other pieces, so well done.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Kim, and please pass along our thanks to your interior staff for their work. They are incredibly good. All right, excellent. So now we'll move on to our third item for discussion, which is the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, affectionately known as SEFSUC. Here's Director of Special Services Cheryl Hall.
Thank you for the opportunity to share the information about the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative. If we think back about a year ago, just a little over a year ago, this was just an idea coming about because of five districts deciding that they were not able to come together to form a cooperative that would have been housed in Owatonna. So this is kind of a culmination of, of the work that we've done over the last 12 months. Currently, we have an enrollment, and our program's about 80 students. I broke it down on, on, from our member districts, how many students in each program. The first building there is the Alexander Learning Academy. We shorten that up to say Alex for that building. That is our former Cannon River Education Center building in Faribault. The Students with Unique Needs Program, sitting at 16 students, is about where we wanted to start with the population in that building at the Laura Baker Center. And then our STEP program is our Secondary Transition Education Program, sitting at about 20 students right now. So a total of 80, and then the breakdown there. You'll see that we have a couple of non-members. When we have students that are open enrolled into a member district, we serve those students, and that's what that reflects. Otherwise, we are not accepting non-member students at this time because we consider our programs actually very full to start the year based on our current staffing ratio. So a little background, just so you're familiar with our programming and what, what we do in each of the programs. I'll start with the SUN program at Laura Baker. That's a highly structured and individualized program. It's really a one-to-one program for students on the autism spectrum that also might have other neurobiological conditions and also have some, maybe some mental health or other health conditions that cause them to have some significant behaviors and, and challenges, sensory, sensory regulation, those kinds of things that require a very small individualized setting and, and one-to-one, very highly structured curriculum and approaches. Again, our programs and the setting for programs, our goal is always to help a student develop the skills in order to return back to their home school district or their home school. The Alexander Learning Academy is located in Faribault at, like I said, the Cannon River Education Center, the former site. It serves students with significant social, emotional, learning needs, and we are incorporating for the first time the Boys Town Social Emotional Learning Curriculum and Program. And that is a program that's based on a motivation kind of system and teaching pro-social skills in a very highly structured approach. Students who qualify for mental health services in this program also receive those services through Fernbrook Family Services who work collaboratively, collaboratively within our program. So they're housed in our program, they're working hand in hand with our staff across the entire program, and that's one of the changes we did this year. We really wanted to reach more students with mental health services. Our former day treatment program only serves students in a particular part of the program that qualified for day treatment services, the mental health services, but we know that all students, many students come with different profiles and could qualify and benefit from mental health services, so we've expanded those services this year and included all students at the Alexander Learning Academy. So the Boys Town, like I was saying, the Boys Town Social Skills Program is, it is an evidence-based, researched-proven program that's been around for many years. It's a highly structured program that serves students with emotional behavioral problems. It teaches them and it helps us to teach their families how to change the skills lifelong, and so students can become more functional with the challenges that they have. It helps build the healthier relationships and empowers students to make good life choices. It incorporates that motivational system that I was talking about, it's a leveled program, so students earn points or, or points during the day, and they earn points for the positive things that they do, and they also lose points for inappropriate behaviors. So they understand, they get that connection of what's appropriate, what's inappropriate, but they always have the chance to build on the positive and turn things around. When they turn things around, they can still earn points. So it's not a total loss. We don't have that, you get into that spiral of negative kind of reinforcement then, and then there's consequences. And there's always a chance, always a chance to fix it and say you're sorry, and for staff at the, at the program to accept that unconditionally and, and then move on and build on that relationship and build on those positives with that. We're seeing some great things happening with that program already, and really, I'm really, really thrilled that that's the direction we decided to go this year. The Secondary Transition Education Program is, are, serves our students that are 18 to 21, who are not quite done with all of their special education goals in the area of transition and are not ready to graduate from high school, but they finished 12 years of school. And that is located now at our towns, at Town Square. We, we used to have programming there years ago. That's actually where our day treatments started, in this site. And so the, these students are in that site. We needed to expand. Once Owatonna joined us and Medford had joined us, we had so many students for the Alexander Learning Academy that in July, we needed to, we decided we needed to actually go to a new site in order to house and serve all of our students appropriately. So we quickly regrouped in, in July and found this site and were able to move in in August and, and then, and get things ready to roll for the first day of school. So our, the key components of the STEP program are, they had, do have classroom instruction. It's Practical Assessment Exploration Lab, which is a hands-on work experience, skills development for going out in the workforce. It helps them to identify their likes, their dislikes, their strengths, areas that are maybe not a great match for them before they actually go out into that field and try it out. It gives them a measured, a, a measurement of, of how their skill is. It also breaks it down into a task analysis. Each little step is broken down in, in what they have to do and what they have to know, and so we know exactly who has mastered which level, how independent they are, how independent they're going to be able to be in any kind of work experience. They also go out in the community and do work experiences. Some of our students do end up in paid positions, but that is not the purpose of the work experience. We're really looking at providing opportunities for students to be in a variety of work experience jobs before they're out on their own after age 21. We also have a learning lab for daily living skills, working on things like cooking and cleaning and taking care of themselves and understanding budgeting and all of those pieces as well. So preparations, training, and opening days, this is just kind of that timeline of this past year, what we did, who was involved. So it really took a, a team. It took our district office team, as you heard Matt say, in the opening days of, of the school district, that, that we really took the whole district team to work together to create this new district. It is creating a new district. It took a lot of work, still taking a lot of work, a lot of effort. It's been challenging. We've learned a lot along the way, and there have been bumps, but there are some great things that are happening for students, and that's the, the biggest, the biggest point that we really want to make is that, that in the end, this is a, a great opportunity for us to make some changes that were necessary in our programming and to serve students across multiple districts and come together to do that. A couple of things I'll point out is that the Laura Baker site was turned over to us on, on August 26th. That, that isn't a lot of time for staff to get a building ready to go for a highly structured, individualized program. We're still working on getting furniture in place. We're still working on a lot of the systems. They, you know, the, the workers are still kind of coming in a little bit, doing some little ti, tiny finishing touches, so it has been a challenge for the, for that staff to come in and do that. The Alexander Learning Academy as well, we were, we were pushing up till the very end to get all of the renovations or actually the refurbishing of the building that was supposed to happen as it turned over from Faribault to Northfield Schools as the leasing, leasers of that, of that space. So there were a lot of challenges with that. They did a, a really They did a really wonderful job getting that space ready, but it did take a lot more time than we were expecting. And as you know, with any building or renovation projects, there are always things that you come across that take a little more time than you expect. So, our staff, I really have to commend our staff. Our new staff that we hired, brand-new staff coming into the district, have gone above and beyond and they are just exceptional individuals and exceptional team that have come together for a common good and put things in place. But it has been very, very challenging and I, I do want to commend them for that. And our leaders, Tom White is our leader at the SUN program and at the STEP program and Elizabeth Dean is our Alexander Learning Academy Coordinator. They have both been working around the clock, not only getting the building and helping to get the buildings in place, ordering, planning, programming, training staff. It's been an exceptional challenge for them and they've, have risen to that challenge and done a really nice job. So, those final pack, you know, preparations, like I said, the packing, the cleaning, things getting turned over, kind of late in the game, but that's what happens sometimes. So, celebrations. I was in the building checking on staff and talking with staff at the beginning and the end of the day, kind of trying to hit all the programs last week, especially on those first days and making things, making sure things were going as smoothly as possible. Students were very welcomed by staff engaging when I was at the SUN program. They had a bubble machine going and it was just very gentle and the students coming in. They were so excited to come into, it was very warm and welcoming. Laura Baker Services put a big sign out in front of their lawn welcoming the SUN students to Laura Baker Campus, which was just wonderful. Some families were bringing students that day, so I think it was really nice that they could see that. It was nice for the, the staff to feel welcome as well. It was just, it's a wonderful environment there. So, again, the Boys Town training, there were some really positive remarks on the first day. We have a staff member that has been there at the Alex Learning Center. She's been with us for 12 years. She was in the previous program. She's been a teacher there and she said she has never seen such a positive change in the implementation of a program than using Boys Town with our students and also the way we've divided our students. She's working at the high school, middle school, the secondary level. It's really made a large impact right away and that is the program that's probably running the smoothest there right now. So, it, and it was, you know, she shared that students were voicing a feeling of, of positive feelings and that they were feeling safe in their surroundings and that they were, that they liked the behavior and point system because it was really clear, even on the first day, what it was that was expected. So, I think that's a really big, big positive that I wanted to share. Staff reported that, you know, even with tough situations with students and some of the adjustments with, with what was happening, that they felt supported and the Fernbrook staff were supporting them as well. And that was a good plus. Again, like I said, there aren't, you know, when creating a new district or creating anything new, there are those challenges and we've had some bumps in the road. The number of students at the Alex building meeting their needs and the programming, developing the programs to meet those needs, has been a challenge. The number of students coming out of Owatonna has been a challenge for us. That, that increased our numbers quite drastically for that building and those programs. And getting ready for that is probably our, our biggest hurdle at this time. A few students were lacking some necessary information that, you know, we have to share a lot of information going back and forth to be ready. Some students are, of course, are struggling with that transition. There's placement questions, need for school resource officer to promote positive proactive. We're really talking about can a resource officer be present in that building on a positive note to stay ahead and not just be responding to things that are negatively happening or negative behaviors of students and really creating more of that relationship base and that positive base. We do have a shortage of staff. This is, this is probably one of the biggest challenges right now is when we are understaffed, we can't implement a program that we know will work for students. We are short 11 educational assistants, at least we were. We're working on that diligently. We're trying to create new ways of finding people and putting the word out there and spreading the word that this is a great program to work in, or great programs to work in because it's not just the Alex program, but it's all, our programs are short. So, we are looking for that. I have finally finished the, hiring the last two FTEs for teachers though, as of today. So, we will be fully staffed there. So, that training and support for all staff through that implementation, as we work and as we bring people on board, that will be a continued challenge trying to identify that time. Developing those many procedures and communications as we learn, there's things that we didn't know, we didn't know, and those things are coming up. So, we're, we're addressing those and working together to try and resolve those pieces. So, overall, I would say that we are off to a good start, working across the districts to help to address those challenges. But there's so many positives that we're seeing with students, things that our SUN program, we're seeing some great, great responses for, from our students in that program as well. Highly structured, highly engaged programming that's going on there, even with the lack of having all the materials yet in place. And I wanted to just say thank you. Thank you to the school board for all of your support. Thank you to the business office and HR and all of the people that have been involved in supporting this effort because we couldn't do it alone. It, it does take a team and it's been wonderful. We felt very supported and everyone has responded in a really positive way. So, I thank everyone for supporting us in this venture. Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you. Board members, questions or comments? Margaret?
Well, I serve on the board for a second. I have to echo what Cheryl says and add to it. I don't know if you can hear me. They've put together an entire school system from Northfield to Owatonna involving, involving all of this, hiring all the new staff. And not just a school system, but a school system of really unique students and special needs. And it's been incredible to see the work that Cheryl has done and her colleagues putting this all together inside a year and new leases and problems that come up and suddenly 10 more students in a program. And it's, it's been impressive to see the work that they have, that Cheryl has put into all this. It's just amazing. Thank you.
Excellent. Well said. Other comments?
Yeah, I think we should get her. Absolutely.
Excellent. Other comments?
Yes, absolutely. I think that Cheryl's being very kind in terms of the amount of work that this is, because Cheryl is actually the Director of Student Services for the Northfield Public Schools and Special Service. I, I know, thank you, Denise, for giving me, because I think we have to stay for time to time, the legacy, yes, the legacy title, but, you know, two-tenths of her position is being quoted to the cooperative. And this is an important distinction to make. When we agreed to be the fiscal host for the cooperative, that meant that we took on the finance portion and the HR portion. So, for example, the leases are not with the Northfield Public Schools, they're actually with the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, who we are running the business for at this point. Because remember, the goal is within, my personal goal would be within five years that the cooperative is strong enough that it runs on its own with its own master agreement, with its own director, with its own office staff and those kinds of pieces. But to get this started, we needed to take on this responsibility for the four-member co-op. And our district office staff has, let's be straight, they've been under a lot of strain to hire all of those folks to make sure that all of the high level of background check and all those things that we do are in place. And it is really amazing that the programming has started. There are significant challenges yet and we have reached out. There are things in terms of hiring educational assistants that we would not have done two weeks ago, you know, that we are doing now and coming together with Owatonna and Faribault and collaborating on using some of their pools for educational assistance and making sure those people know that we have positions available. So, I just think it's really important for the board to under, we are still struggling sometimes with the distinction between the cooperative portion, because we're running the cooperative, and then the Northfield Public Schools portion, but it's a language piece, it's something that we're getting together. And I, every construction project I've ever been involved in in 21 years, which I think counted seven or eight, things are going right up until the last minute. And if you pushed it out two weeks, it would still go right up to the last minute. But again, staff came together, they have really done a marvelous job of, of making the best of it and the Laura Baker facility is transformed. I mean, it is a, we, the goal was to provide a therapeutic environment for students with this kind of special needs and they've achieved it. It's, it's actually, it's quite striking, I think, if you have a chance to go through there at some point. So, there's a lot of work been done, a lot of work yet to go. Rob Deener in Faribault, the Assistant Director for the co-op, one-tenth of his time has been very helpful to Cheryl. Our Assistant Directors, who weren't even really supposed to be part of this, has helped. And yet Cheryl still has the Northfield Public Schools Special Education Services to lead. And so, Cheryl really deserves a lot of our gratitude for really pushing through Val and Molly and a number of other people that have made this happen. We're very appreciative, very appreciative of the support that we've had from the other district, district cooperatives. But when you talk about this in January, it sounds like, hey, yeah, no big deal. And I'll tell you, it has been, I think it's been a much more significant undertaking than any of us ever really thought. But at the end of the day, the kids in the school district with the highest needs for four school districts, I believe are going to get better programming, individualized programming than ever before. And of course, I have to say, I think long-term it's going to save us all some money in doing that in the process, which is a win-win for everyone. So, thank you, Cheryl. You just need to be publicly thanked as well as all of the staff and the other people who have done this.
And I do want to give a shout-out to Lynn Kermenga, my Assistant Director, because without her support throughout Northfield Schools, doing all, all the pieces to help us stay afloat and then jumping in when needed with the cooperative, she's done an exceptional job.
And this has been stressful. It has been stressful for everyone involved, but we, I think we can see the light and we're hoping it's not the proverbial train.
Yeah.
That's true. Thank you very much. Thanks, Matt. You put a better, it's like they built the Taj Mahal without any of us really noticing.
No.
I have a question regarding school closings.
Yes.
With so many different districts involved, who decides school closings that you'd decide?
We are following Northfield Schools and I know that Matt and Todd Sesker are working together since our sites are in both Faribault and Northfield. And I know they've had some discussions. We haven't come back around to that at the school board, the SEVSEC school board meetings yet, but that is something that we follow, we'll have to follow, one district. And that's what most cooperatives or education districts do. They follow one district and it's usually the host district.
Follow-up question. The question also relates though to weather conditions that may be different in Owatonna than it would be in Northfield.
So, we've done quite a bit of discussion of this and it's not as easy as it sounds. My joke would be that they, the superintendents voted and the new guy was voted on three to one. But I think the fact is that, I think, number one, there's going to be an official piece, which is going to need to follow the Northfield Public Schools because all of those individuals are Northfield Public Schools employees at the end of the day and we are selling the services that they provide to the cooperative. That being said, there is going to be, you see with 80 students, that's a lot of students, but there's going to have to be some individual judgments made in terms of certain specific students because the weather conditions do change. And some, at districts, if one school district calls off, they all, the entire cooperative shuts down. We are not looking at that to begin with, though there's going to be some trial with that and some additional thinking about how that can work. It is a challenge of the fiscal host model of the district, but as of right now, and we will be talking about the next SEVSEC meeting, but I think the way that it's going to go is that officially when Northfield Schools call off, the entire cooperative will call off. You got to remember too, the fact that we have the sites only in two communities, even though students come from four. So, Todd and I will certainly be talking, as superintendents always talk about closing school, it's something that we will, of course, take very seriously, but that's where we're at at this point.
I would also say that such as Owatonna or Medford, if the conditions are not, are not good for transportation, they will not transport students. You know, they will make that individual choice not to transport, even though we might be holding school, we will make those concessions for those students that are not able to get to school for that day.
And you know, special education students with specialized train, this is nothing new. For example, we have sent years, in other years, students to programs that we didn't run. So, if you think about sending students to a specific program in the Twin Cities, we'd make some individual decisions if the road conditions were not, even if, even if we had school, if it was, you know, tougher up toward the metro, there were times where those decisions were made not to send those students. So, with a specialized program for people coming from everywhere, there's going to have to be a little bit of a mix.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay. Thank you. And I just want to thank Board Member Margaret Colangelo for serving on the SEVSEC board.
All I do is show up. They, they do all the work.
We appreciate you being our school board liaison for that. Okay, thank you. So, now we will move on to our next report, which is Q Comp. Dr. Hillman and then also Ray Kudry is here to facilitate discussion as well.
So, well, I want to thank everyone for listening and talking a little bit more about Q Comp today. I want to thank Ray for coming tonight. Ray, if you want to come to the podium, just in case there are questions that can facilitate that quickly. I want to thank Ray for the really excellent report he gave at the last board meeting. Q Comp is a pretty deep concept when you really start to get into it. And so, I really appreciate Ray's framing of the, of the issue the last time. In your packet, I gave you a document that Ray and I collaborated on putting together, just putting really more details. And we wanted to give you a very high-level overview at the last meeting, drill down a little bit. That's what you got in your packet this time. And we anticipate this discussion will take a few more meetings. What I want to just do is really just highlight the five areas that are required as part of a Q Comp application. Then I'm just going to highlight quickly the process and the timeline that we're looking at. And then we just wanted to open it up to questions that you have at this point, if that's reasonable. I could, I could go into greater detail presenting these pieces, but I think you've had it in the packet and I don't want to, I know you most likely have looked at it, so I don't want to rehash that with you. But really, the key thing are five specific areas around career ladder and advancement options. And that gives our teachers an opportunity to coach and mentor other teachers within the system while maintaining their connection to the classroom. This is a part that I think Ray and I share a common affection for, in terms of Ray has put something together that really resonated with me about talking about how teachers have another opportunity, just like people who have a really vested interest in athletics or in music or in theater, they have an opportunity to engage in things outside the classroom. This offers our people who are really connected to the classroom, want to give back through that instructional coaching kind of strategy or mentoring, another way to give back in a, in a different way. Job embedded professional development, this is an area that I think we both believe we have a significant advantage in, that we already have the weekly late start for professional learning communities. That's a real hurdle for a lot of districts of how they get that job embedded professional development component in it. Teacher evaluation, and this is really part of that. It's connected to that career ladder in terms of how we look at those teacher coaches and those teacher peer evaluators and those things that Ray had mentioned the last time. And again, I think we've got a really strong start with our teacher development and evaluation system. However, I personally think that this component of the Q Comp application that the team is starting to put together strengthens our TDE program in a way we could not do without it, given the current legislative commitment to TDE. That's teacher development evaluation. The performance pay, I think, is another really great way that the association is looking at this with, with their concept plan in terms of looking at if PLCs achieve their SMART goals, if a building achieves their goals, there's a small performance pay component that can be associated with that. And the final part is an alternative salary schedule. And I think the key thing is that what we're looking at here with the, the concept plan is that what the, make sure I get this one right, Ray. The law says there has to be a mechanism or a trigger for people to move up to the next step in the salary schedule. Now, some districts have included some money on their salary schedule with that. The current plan that we're, is working through right now with the Q Comp team, which is a completely teacher-led team and they've done a fantastic job, by the way, they're really looking at not necessarily tying directly money to the salary schedule, but more around the peer evaluations piece of whether you move to the next step. Did I say that part?
Yeah.
All right. So, those are the five components of a Q Comp plan. I think it's important to note that there's, Q Comp also gives specific money. So, for example, theoretically, there's $169 in state aid and then another $91 that can be added per pupil through a local levy provided by the school board, not something that needs to be voted or approved. And we just need to be straightforward too, that the legislature is out of money on this. You know, the, the fund has been evaporated, it's gone. But what we know is when we've talked to folks from the department, there is a history of the legislature coming through and funding Q Comp in terms of the Q Comp districts that are in the pool or have, have an approved application. So, even though there's no money at this point, we believe there's enough history to show us that moving forward, in terms of considering it anyway, there's a reasonable chance that the legislature will come through and provide some dollars. So, So, just that brief overview of just the rehash of those points, which you had in your packet. And then I just want to talk about a couple of potential timelines, then we'll open up for questions for. Ray, have I missed anything here so far?
Sounds pretty, pretty, pretty good.
Okay, well, we're trying to be thorough here and, and give you some additional information. So there's, there's a couple of key pieces. The next key piece is a letter of intent, which again, hold, does not hold the district or the Association to actually even moving forward beyond that. But the key is, once that letter of intent is signed off by the district and by the Association, we can move forward to submitting an application. And my understanding is that this year, there are three deadlines for applications. One is October fifteenth, the next one is January fifteenth, and the third one is March fifteenth. School districts can submit an application and associations can submit an application anytime prior to one of those dates. Then that date becomes a magic timeframe, and the department has requirements, statutory requirements to respond to districts who've made an application by that particular rolling deadline within thirty days. And so, that begins the process of, it's almost a negotiation between the, the local district and Association and the department, because the department will come back and say, hey, we really like this, but have you thought about this? Apparently, they use a track change document to share what the questions are. So that gets the process going. So, once we approve an application to go forward, we get it in by one of those dates, then that begins this process of working with the department to get a final application. And even when the final application comes with Dr. Casilius's signature on it, then the school board and the Association both then vote whether to move ahead. So there's a number of ti, a number of options for either the Association or the district to say, okay, you know what, we need to just hold off for a second here and, and think about it a little bit more closely. And the fact is that I've given you two potential timelines. One would be if we were to go after the January fifteenth deadline, just for example. I am going to ask you at the next board meeting to consider authorizing the district to sign the letter of intent, so we can at least get the process started. I've given you a sample of the letter of intent in your packet. We then could discuss the application, of course, with the Association helping us go through the application on the October tenth meeting. At the twenty-fourth, the board could consider authorizing the application, so that's after the Septi, or the October fifteenth deadline. So now, we start that process of getting those things together for the January fifteenth piece. And then they have about a month to get back to us, so that puts it into the February-March timeframe for MDE to give us requests for modification. Conceivably, in late March of 2017, the board could consider authorizing the final application. And then, after we get all that done, then it's a matter of waiting for the legislature to decide, are they going to give some additional funding in May or June? If we wanted to push, you know, to look at trying to get something in by the October fifteenth deadline, the timeline would just have to be a little bit accelerated in that at the September twenty-sixth meeting, we could ask you to approve the letter of intent and also discuss the application. So we could have both heads of that at the September twenty-sixth meeting. On the October tenth meeting, we could ask the board to consider authorizing the application. Of course, working with the Association and their team of people who put that together. That would get us in before the October fifteenth timeline. And I don't know, that might be too aggressive, but I think it just, it shows what an option looks like if you, if we wanted together to get the application in by the October fifteenth timeline. And then, you've seen the rest, then that just moves everything up just a little bit. At the end of the day, we're still waiting for the legislature to come through with that toward the end of the school year. And possibly, if the legislature continues as, as they've been, maybe even after the school year. Ray, are there other pieces that, that I have not highlighted that you'd like to bring special attention to?
Well, I, I would kind of like to just talk a little timeline-wise. The thirty days after, if you march that out, you've got October fifteenth or January fifteenth. Either one of those could probably work. But they have thirty days to respond, and then you would go back and forth with modifications that might be required if you missed one of the, the things that's there. So, given the fact that there's no, nothing binds us until we vote both directions, on the Association side and the board side. Although it's very tight, obviously, the October fifteen deadline gives us a lot more time to go back and forth to the state and get our ducks in a row. And I understand that there are, that's problematic, because you need time to digest. So, I'm, I'm not suggesting you rush in any way, because I don't want to rush into this. But given the fact that we get to vote eventually, that is a big deal. If you run out to the January fifteen, well, let's say they respond thirty days later, and that's February fourteen or so. Well, then, we have to modify, we have to go back, we have to go back and forth. We would need to get approved before the legislature does whatever they're going to do. So it does put us in a little bit more precarious situation if we, and, and I don't think the March deadline is in any way feasible for doing something for next year. So, just with the deadlines, that's kind of what we're, what we're up against. And again, I do not encourage us to rush in any way, but I think, having gone through what, what I was just hearing with the cooperative, you understand how the due dates and the, the, we're moving in dates and all of that stuff, it just comes up on us really fast. So, I, I guess I, I would encourage to strongly consider, at least, looking at if the October fifteen is feasible.
And, you know, we can do, I laid out that second time, but I just want to give you a couple of timeframes, as you can see, and that second timeframe does work if we do both the consideration of the letter of intent and hear the first app, the first real deeper dive into the application at the next board meeting.
Okay. So, I think board members will have a number of questions, so we'll work through discussion here. I think this is really, really important, and I, I appreciate the level of detail you came back with. And I think we've all had a lot of opportunity to think about it over the course of two weeks. I think this will ensue with some good discussion. So Noel, you had a question?
Is the future Q Comp here in, funded guaranteed by the state of Minnesota?
So, Ray, my understanding of that is, once you're in the program, they are committed to giving you those dollars, the one sixty-nine, until the legislature would say to stop it.
Until they rescind that law. And I, I could see, I don't have a crystal ball, but if you think about it politically, I think it would be a difficult thing to get rid of. We currently have a split legislature. It's a, it's a, it came from one side of the aisle. And, and it, it gained support on the other side of the aisle through, you know, conferencing and things. The, the most likely scenario beyond, I, I don't think, I don't think it will go away, but another scenario would be that it goes statewide. There is a small push for that, but I, I don't know if there is, if that would be likely to happen either. But I, for now, it would have to be rescinded, the law would have to be rescinded, it doesn't have a sunset on it.
I think a couple of other pieces along with that would be that, it's a program that's been around for more than a decade. You know, and has continued to have been funded by the legislature, whether it was dominated by one party or the other over that same period of time, that have Q Comp. And I think it would be, I, I agree with Ray, I think the more likely scenario is some kind of statewide push, either by combining the TDE plan and Q Comp things to, to make it more of a uniform piece.
Yeah.
Kind of marrying those two things, that's been a push from some lobbying organizations. But there are, there's a, we've got more than half the students in the state of Minnesota who are governed by this legislation. There would be a number of people who would be very upset if the, if the state was, it's almost, in those districts right now, it would be equivalent to taking money off the formula, if you really think about it. They would, they've given money, they've promised it. It'd be the equivalent of someone saying, we're going to take a hundred and sixty-nine dollars off of the formula, rather than getting it. And while we know it's really hard to get money on the formula, I think there'd be some significant political ramifications for someone saying, we're going to take this away from you. I do think the more likely piece could be that either adding to the program or some kind of marriage, so to speak, between the teacher development and evaluation districts, which currently get zero. While they had the one-time funding that we got a couple of years ago, versus the districts that have the ability to get up to two hundred and sixty dollars through the aid and levy portion.
Other questions?
Helen, I have two questions. One is on the deadline. For the October fifteenth deadline, do you get, is it a queue, so it's to your advantage to be, is that what I understand, to be in the earlier?
The letter puts us in the queue, as I understand it. I think the October fifteenth, the advantage in my mind for the October fifteenth one is, there's a lot more time to go back and forth. And if the state comes to us, one of the things is, we're going to have to look at what they have and talk with the district, you, and with the teachers. And there's a lot of passing of information that has to have. So I envision that process as being just bulky by nature, and having six months to do it is the big thing.
Yes, go ahead.
And my second question is, I noticed in the, it says the letter of intent does ask us to indicate our intention regarding the potential ninety-one dollar levy. So, by the board doing this, I guess I want to know what, what, what that exactly means. Does it mean that we are definitely going to be going forward? Or it means that as a board right now, we don't see a red flag that would pause us with that, but it, we would, this isn't us voting on the ninety-one dollar levy?
I spoke with Tyler Livingston, who is one of the Q Comp experts up at the department. And we've gotten to know Tyler over the years through the principal evaluation pilot that we did. So, it's, it's an easy conversation for us to have, and I asked him specifically that question. And he said, absolutely not, the, you know, the intent does not tie you to the levy piece. What does tie you to the levy piece is the final application, is my understanding. And so, I think the key thing is to let them know, are you, are you considering, you know, the ninety-one dollar levy at this point? So you still have some time, but it's not until that final application, that's my understa, is that the same thing you've discovered?
Yeah, so in part of the back and forth, with the, with the, what we would put together, there would be a budget associated with that. We would include it with that, and then, when it becomes final, then that's when you're going to have to figure that out. I, I will say that it, it, it doesn't work without it. So, it is an important piece that has to be decided down the road, and it will be part of it, but it's really difficult to make anything work without that. We did run into that last time. But it doesn't have to be decided now.
I think that's the key thing, is that, I think that as you get to see the application, you know, over the next, you know, couple of meetings, I think you're going to see there's a lot of thought that has gone into, how does the budget work? And I really applaud the Association from really doing a deep dive into, why was this, why did this not fly before? You know, in terms of what were the hurdles and what were the stumbling, stumbling blocks? And I think that we've just, we know so much more now than we did ten years ago when the first application was made. And I think that the budget that I've seen, that the tentative budget that they put together really looks at, you know, where would you use those dollars to best support teachers' professional growth and development?
Okay. Other questions? I, I do have a couple of questions as well. So last time, or, or, as, or your last presentation, you talked about how, you know, there's an advantage in that we have some teachers in the district who have worked under Q Comp programs in their previous districts. And I'm just wondering if you can articulate a little bit about what they saw as the strengths and maybe where they saw some of the challenges?
We brought in some of the people to our committee, we had three in particular, that were in the, in the evaluation part, they were some of the teacher leaders in their own districts. So, they looked at that part as one of the most beneficial pieces, was the, the teacher observations, the evaluation, the feedback, the opportunity to get into classes and to receive, to, to see other teachers and to receive that feedback from other teachers. That was probably the, the main piece of it. So.
And then, would the district incur any costs, or is that cost to implement the program supported by the Q Comp revenue?
So the way I look at it is, after you get it going, the Q Comp would zero out, all of the Q Comp money would pay for it. Now, there is a piece, there's a requirement of us, of us to identify a staff development set aside for kind of the startup piece. But frankly, as I look at it, I, I actually think it's a lot of the kinds of staff development we would do already anyway.
Maybe expanded with more people involved.
Exactly, so I, I think that once you get it going, the way that it's going to work is the budget that's put forward covers the Q Comp costs. And I, and, and remember, that's not a general fund cost either, because it's, it's a specific categorical item. It might be housed within the general fund, I'm trying to think about that Val. I, I'm not sure that the Q Comp revenue would be, might be housed within the general fund, but it's one of those pieces that's segregated. So the Q Comp money that comes in could only be used to support the Q Comp program.
It would be tracked similar to like operating capital, it has a restricted fund balance and would be its own program.
Okay. So then I have two other questions. Does MDE have any accountability measures in place for Q Comp districts?
It's, you have to evaluate it every year.
Okay.
And then, it has to be reviewed as well at the state, and there's a whole bunch of forms that have to be filled out and people that go through and look at that. That's, one of the positions would be, the director would be in charge of that evaluation and submit that to the state each year. So that's their oversight piece.
Okay, and then the hundred and sixty-nine dollars and the ninety-one dollars, the, the, those two revenue pieces, is that the same revenue from the onset of the program in two thousand and five, or have they adjusted that over time?
That's a good question.
I don't have the answer to that, we can find that out for you Julie.
I was just curious if they've.
I guarantee that there were two components originally.
Yes.
Okay.
But what they were, I don't remember, I could find out.
And then, my last question is around your comment of saying that it doesn't work without the additional levy piece, the board-approved levy. Help, help me to understand that.
The way the budget's built, you, we've got to pay people for the career ladder positions. And that, that all comes out of the budget. And whatever's left at the end is what would go towards the performance pay piece. So, if you eliminate the ninety-one dollars, the performance pay basically goes under a thousand dollars per teacher. Which then makes it look like, okay, so if we have other requirements to do here, there's different things where you're reflecting more, and there's, there's a lot more requirements for a teacher to do, then at a certain point, there's, we feel, a tipping point of what makes it worth it to do any of these processes, to engage in the peer coaching. As much as it's great for me professionally, at the end of the day, if I have to choose a night such as tonight, where I would sit in my room and work until I came here, and then add another piece of time onto that, I'm not going to do that for a thousand dollars. And it's not just me, but that's what we're hearing from, our, our feedback from the first go-round. We got, that was one of the main things, was the levy piece, because it didn't make it worth it. We weren't willing to do that piece. And then there was, there was, we had messed with the pay schedule a lot more. There was a third one that's escaping my mind, but it was one of our big pieces of feedback from last time. We have to make the process worth it for people.
Okay.
And I'm guessing there too, Ray, you know, that's part of the piece around, remember, it's not just the school board that has to vote, the Association also has to vote on. So, you know, the Association is talking with their members about, you know, what are the conditions that would be, need to be present in order for them to vote, you know, to be sent. And I know that in the one meeting we had with, with you and I and a couple of other folks, that, you know, they've done some extensive research about what is that tipping point, you know, in terms of, you know, getting support within the Association as well. So it's not just a school board piece, it's also about looking, and that's, I think, one of the points of Q Comp is looking at, you know, district leadership through school boards and the local associations coming together to collaborate on this next generation kind of professional development piece, as well as what is the comp, because it's Q Comp, which means quality compensation. And there is a, there is a piece that if there's not enough incentive in the performance pay, that's a question that the Association has to wrestle with about the components that are within the plan. So, I think that what Ray is telling us is, these are the things that we've talked about with our members and where we think that particular tipping point is. Just like we have to look at, what is the tipping point for the board? You know, in terms of, you know, the benefit that the school district gets versus some of the other questions that we have to wave. And that's exactly how the process was designed. The process was designed to be collaborative, so that, you know, both the district leadership and the Association are on the same page in terms of what it means for the district moving forward. The plan, I, I really can't wait to share with you, because I'm super impressed with the work that's been done in terms of, and the level of thought, and frankly, the theft of really great ideas from other districts. And so, there's some real excitement about things that I think that the, our teaching staff would get access to that right now are very difficult for us to replicate because of the, of how lean we are in a number of areas within the district.
Okay. And then, one last question about timeline. So, the, the October fifteenth deadline, then obviously were, you know, as you said, for potential setbacks to, to a, a designed timeline, would there be a risk? for potential setbacks to, to a, a designed timeline, would there be a risk? I think Ellen maybe asked it too. We would be in queue to where we know the legislators will only fund those, you know, at the end of the session hopefully, because we know there's no money there, so they would have to, to allocate that money to the districts in queue. So would there be any potential that we wouldn't be in the queue with the October fifteenth deadline to where we wouldn't be a district that would get the funding? Did I ask that question clearly or not?
I think what you're asking is.
Would we be at risk of not getting the money once the legislators say who's up for it?
Oh, absolutely.
Because of the lateness of the time, potential timeline?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, as, as a person who's put a lot of hours into this, that's our big worry overall. And I, I can't really answer it. I think if we get our ducks in a row and we get something that we can all agree on throughout the, the, this, you know, next six months or whatever, that the state approves, it's going to be harder for them to say, oh, we've given it to all these districts and it, you know, it's, it's an interesting political piece to this. I can't really predict though.
No, unfortunately, no one can predict.
No.
I do know in talking with Tyler, no other districts have applied yet for the October fifteenth deadline. So I, I don't believe there are any districts still in the queue from before. Because I think the legislature took care of that, if I'm correct, or do you?
Well, I'm not sure because there was, I don't know exactly that little, that little piece because once you hand it in and it goes back and forth. I know there were a number of districts last spring that didn't have very good applications that applied. So I don't know how, where they sit in the whole mess.
When I talked with Tyler last week, he said there were no other districts who have, who have made application for the October fifteenth deadline yet. So, you know, even if the application piece is the, at this point, we'd be the first, you know, if we got it and it's very strong, that we could be one of the first in the queue for the October fifteenth deadline. But we just don't know. You're exactly right. We do not know what the outcome of the November election is. Could have a significant impact on how the legislature looks at this. Other changing economic conditions, you know, could also play a factor. So that is the great unknown. And frankly, just to be straightforward, there could be a lot of work done by a lot of people. And then the legislature does not fund it. And we've all said, if we can't get the money from the legis-, there's just no way we can move forward. And so that is an unknown and it's a little bit of a leap of faith.
So I think what, what we're looking at then is really needing to decide if we want to move forward, then we would have to escalate the timeline to where the next board meeting we would be making the decision of approving the letter of intent and discussing the application process. We're discussing the application. So I guess that's something we need to determine as a board, how we feel about the proposal of the two different timelines and where we feel comfortable proceeding. Ellen?
I guess where, where I sit is if, if the teachers have put in a lot of time into the, this already and we're just looking to, can we take the time to, to really mull on it on September twenty-sixth with the application? I mean, I think if we see red flags for some reason, we're not obligated to, to push for the October fifteenth deadline. But I think, you know, I guess I feel like as a board member, they've put that sort of time in. All they're asking is can we, can we look at our agenda so that we can, unless we already have a red flag that we think right now we, we don't want to go any further. But I feel like we owe it to them to, to, to work towards that schedule.
Okay. I see a lot of head nodding. So does anyone else want to weigh in with some comments? Or do I, do we move forward and say that we're comfortable with the next step, which would be some approvals at the next board meeting? Okay.
The key, the key thing is the letter of intent. That's the first piece, but then also discussing the application. You know, because then if you then were to approve the initial application at the October tenth meeting, we get it in before the October fifteenth deadline.
Okay. Okay. We'll move forward then.
And then just again, thanks to, there's, how many people are on your committee? Twelve, fourteen?
Somewhere around ten or twelve, yeah.
So I think, I think these people, and I agree, these people have done a lot of work and really trying to learn from other districts. And I really appreciate it because I think there's some real energy behind it. And I think it's really good to see professionals saying, hey, what's the next step that we can do, you know, to really provide that energy for professional development and, you know, just becoming that next rung in our professional career ladder. So thank you, Ray, and to the association for the good work done so far.
Thank you for your consideration. If you noticed a weird smirk on my face, it's because I'm starting to think, oh, I've got a lot of work to do.
All right, good. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Board, for great discussion as well on that. So the last item for discussion is the Dundas Dome, which again is just, we had discussed it at the last meeting. So Dr. Hillman just has some additional comments as we move forward on showing the timeline for the process of the potential of utilizing the Dundas Dome.
So I don't have any new presentation this time because the way that I've tried to structure this is, is we've done in the past, give you some information in one meeting, come back and really ask for additional questions. And then, you know, at the next meeting on September twenty-sixth, I would ask you to consider authorizing activities, Director Tom Groutmann and myself to negotiate a rental or a lease with the Dundas Dome folks. I have just put in some next steps here. Again, tonight we're talking the discussion, questions about, you know, any potential rental. The twenty-sixth would be considering authorizing Tom and I to talk about the Dundas Dome. We could potentially, though I think this is really unlikely, we, we'd consider maybe we could also put it into the preliminary levy that will be, will ask you to certify then, but after Val and I have talked, we're not sure that's even a possibility. Remember, you can always levy in arrears, you know what I mean? So it's not that we miss our opportunity to levy. We're being a little rose-colored Lasik there in terms of maybe we could get it into this year's levy. But, because we could always remove it, you know, by the December one, but that might not even be possible this time around. Then in October twenty, October or November, after Tom and I have had a chance to work with the Dundas Dome administration to look at some kind of equitable, reasonable lease levy kind of scenario, we would come to you and ask you to approve the levy. So, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, approve the lease, not the levy, approve the lease. And then potentially the original timeline that had, when we put in the pack, it was considering maybe we could get it in for the final lease levy for this payable seventeen, but it really looks like if we were to go forward, we would actually do that for payable eighteen. However, what it would do is give us the opportunity, if you approved us, to negotiate a lease or rental for this coming spring. We'd have the opportunity to that. You could approve the lease and then we would be ready to levy for it under the lease levy authority for payable eighteen. So just want to see if there were any questions or thoughts about the Dundas Dome from the last time, just so I can be prepared to answer any of the other questions that you have.
Okay. Board members, are there any questions? Margaret?
I'm sorry, this just occurred to me, Matt. Do we have transportation costs?
Great question.
Of getting the kids out there?
So the way that this currently works is we actually have an activity bus because during nearly every season of the year, we use multiple sites for practices. So we pay Benjamin Bus for a one-hour activity bus after school and it hits all of the different sites. So for example, in the winter, it might hit Sibley, Greenville Park, the Ice Arena and the Gymnastics Club. Now, of course, not all the students utilize that bus, but it is an option for us to transport those students there. We are well, we are not at that hour, but we have to purchase it in a one-hour increment. So adding the Dundas Dome on that loop, Tom has said would not be an issue, would not cost us any additional money because we're already paying for that with or without the Dundas Dome facility.
Perfect. Thank you. Other questions board members have?
I did have a, a question about, which I was able to catch Tom Groutmann today on as to whether we would always rent the entire facility. And he said there would be cases where we wouldn't necessarily rent the entire facility. His numbers work towards where we're renting the entire facility, but that would not necessarily always be the case. So.
Again, I think one of the advantages of this is the fact that we have a chance for a large indoor practice facility in the spring that we don't have to own, we don't have to maintain, we don't have to insure. And if we don't like how it serves us, we can walk away without having any, you know, other kind of debt incurred, which I think is a good piece.
Okay. Ellen?
As Matt was saying that, I just remembered something that you had shared with me when we had our update was, the other piece of that is then in terms of our own grounds and keeping the students off of them will help in terms of, I don't know that it'll be a cost savings, but at least it'll, it'll provide safer outdoor fields when, when the weather is permitting. And that, that was something I hadn't thought about.
Yeah, if you think about, if you let the grass grow, you know, when it's really starting to germinate and it'll get all that, you're going to get a stronger, you're going to get a thicker turf. And then once the sun is out and we're ready to use it in those fields in April, of course, it's going to be a better turf, which I think is good for everyone. If you've ever seen our fields at the end of the spring, when it's been a lot of rain and all that, they are in, in some real tough condition. And then for them to regenerate over the summer, sometimes is a trick as well. So I think there's a number of pieces, including also allowing us to get practices completed at an earlier time, to allow kids to get home and get homework and prepare for end of year finals and, well, not that late, but, you know, prepare for their studies in that way. So I think there's a number of positive reasons to consider this.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move forward then. There are no items for individual action at this time. So we will move on to approval of the consent grouping. There were some items in the personnel file to be added to the consent grouping. So is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Matt, I had asked you, and I think it might be interesting for the other board members to hear as well, if you notice in the consent grouping, there was an addition of a teacher mentor position at each of the buildings, one of them being in the table file. So I had asked about what that entailed. So I think it's of interest to other forums.
Sure. So one of the pieces that we have really worked to try to find a solution to over the past several years is mentoring our new teachers. We think it's really important to recruit high-quality teachers. We think it's even more important to retain them. And so as you remember, years ago, we actually had a, a teacher within the district who had part of her assignment had to be a new teacher mentor. That was a casualty of some of the early budget reductions in the mid-two thousands. And since then, we've really cobbled together different pieces. And frankly, there's not been a lot of consistency in it across the district. So as I mentioned before during the Q Comp presentation, we did get some one-time money for teacher development evaluation from the legislature two years ago. A lot of districts might have gone out and hired a, a coach, but you hire a coach, we had about ninety thousand dollars. If you hired one FTE, that money is gone in one year. So what we've chosen to do with it is try to find other ways to support our teachers in the evaluation process by doing things like some teacher exchange programs, you know, where a teacher can apply to have a substitute for a portion of the day, then go observe in another classroom at a similar grade level in the district. That makes the fund more sustainable because we're only paying a hundred and some dollars of substitute cost versus a significant FTE component if you just did one person. We worked with the association over the last year to try to find a way to create a mentor program. Again, we have agreed to having a very reasonable stipend. It's a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar stipend for the year. Again, with a ninety-thousand-dollar budget that could be carried over, we could, if Q Comp were not to go through, we would be able to sustain that mentoring for quite a period of time. As you've seen in the table file, there's some really excellent people who are being assigned to those mentoring positions. And frankly, this is a thing that we've left very wide open. And what Director of Teaching and Learning Mary Hansen, who met with the mentors earlier this week, has said, we're keeping those requirements very open because we want the mentors to have the trust to meet the needs of the mentees rather than some kind of artificial pre-prescribed program to say, sign off on this. We are asking them to log their hours. We're asking them to log what kinds of activities they're doing. But we see this as a way to make sure that every new teacher in the district has a connection with a caring staff member who can help them with questions that they might have. So again, we're doing it on a trial basis this year and would continue it should it continue to work.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for the, the explanation of that item in the consent grouping. So is there, okay, there's, I think I asked, there was nothing anyone wanted to pull from the consent grouping. So now we'll move on. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Noel. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have a night, a number of items for information. First, the strategic planning update. Dr. Hillman?
So I just want to give you an update on the strategic planning process. You'll be getting some additional information later this week in advance of our work session on September twenty-second. But just going back to the why, I think it's always important we start with, why are we doing this? And I believe that strategic planning really helps us refine our focus and provides clarity in our purpose that's really good and it's essential for good decision-making by the us at the board level and all, by you at the board level, excuse me, and us at the administrative level. And in addition, it really helps us focus in terms of stewardship to make sure that we're being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars and placing it in the location that we think will make the biggest difference in terms of a set of goals that we have. So what has been done so far, as you know, board and administrators met with our facilitator, Dr. Miles, in early August. We completed a visioning activity and a prioritization activity. On September first, we had eighty-nine staff members who chose to attend a, a similar session, though a little bit more comprehensive than what we went through in early August. In the evening of September first, as many of you know, we had forty-four folks come to a, a meeting, community members come to a similar strategic planning, visioning, prioritization activity. I was thrilled with forty-four. I can't remember the last time we had a public meeting for something like this where we had more than six people at. So I'm, I was really thrilled and thank all board members and administrators who reached out to people and asked them to come to that meeting. Thanks to Erin Bailey, who had provided us with interpreters for that meeting. So we had a really great turnout. On September twentieth, I am going to attend a Greenville Park Community School meeting to secure additional feedback from our Latino community through a leadership network group that makes it, meets at the community school. We're having a number of interpreters, interpreters there and available to help us gather feedback from our Latino community. That was something that came out of the community session that forty-four people attended. Really wanting to make sure that we reached out and, and secured all stakeholder feedbacks. It looks like just before this meeting, I got to talk with some DYC members. That looks like we will have a chance, I will have a chance to meet with the DYC or a portion of the DYC on September twenty-first. That's the District Youth Council. I shouldn't use the acronym on the first time anyway. So we'll have all of that information for you at the September twenty-second work session. Every piece of information, with the exception of the feedback we get on September twentieth and the twenty-first, will be sent out to you later this week digitally. And we'll be including all of the stuff that we have in terms of the feedback that came through those prioritization and visioning exercises, as well as the evaluations from the staff and from the community session. Also, we'll be including another copy of the thought exchange data for you because the thought exchange processes that we did last November and then this past winter are both really important pieces for us to weave into our decisions on strategic planning. And so then, what my hope is, is that we'll have some, we'll really start to gain some consensus at that September twenty-second work session around any tweaks that we want to do to the mission. Really getting a clearer picture of what we want the vision to look like. What's that future self that we'd like to look like in five or so years? And then some initial consensus on those priorities that will help get us there, the short, the near-term priorities that will help us get there. And then my, we will of course talk about it at board meetings between now and October thirtieth. But my goal, as you saw in the super intense evaluation goals, would be to have us adopt those strategic plan, vision, mission, and priorities by the second board meeting in October. So that's just a recap for us as to where we're at. And again, the twenty-second of September, that's right in this room here, it'll be the board and our administrative team as well.
Okay, excellent. Any questions on that? Okay, so we'll be watching for information. You said Thursday?
Thursday or Friday, yeah.
Thursday or Friday, okay, good. Second item, board member committee reports. There is a handout in your packet. So if you want to take a look at that as Dr. Hillman explains the committee reports.
So this is actually something that, that board member Hardy had asked for us last spring to say, you know, we have a number of board members who are assigned to committees and there are times where it would be helpful for the board member to give a report on that committee. We just haven't had a structure to do that to this point. Sometimes it might have come through announcements and recognitions, but not very often. So what we've done is in your packet is just a rudimentary screenshot of the Google form that we will send you the link to. I invite you to bookmark, bookmark that on your computer. And then if you are serving on one of the committees, we'll, we'll limit the committee reports to the second meeting of each month. And if you have a desire to give a report, you're not required to give a report. But if you'd like to give a report on the committee, you fill out a Google form. We're asking you to do that on the Thursday, before the Thursday morning of, the Thursday morning preceding the board meeting so that we have it so we can put that into the packet. And basically what will happen is when you hit submit on that, Danita gets an email and it alerts her that there's a form that's come in. We basically kind of copy and paste that into the board packet so that everyone can have the report prior to the meeting. We think that that's important so that you aren't put on the spot at the meeting thinking that, oh, I should give this report on a committee that I attended. It allows you to have a chance to be thoughtful about what you're going to put into the report. It also allows board members, to other board members, to read your report ahead of time and formulate any questions that they might have. So again, just, I thought about bringing it up on the screen, but just, I think that the screenshot is probably a good. So, uh, again, uh, just, I thought about bringing it up on the screen, but just, I think that the screenshot is probably good enough at this point.
Okay. Everyone like the form? We'll start using it again, you know, we can always modify this board, so thank you for doing that. Um, next item, Chamber of Commerce luncheon, Dr. Hillman, state of the school district.
I understand it's the toughest ticket to get in town tomorrow.
It is.
So...
Everyone wants to hear.
I will be presenting, uh, as Dr. Richardson has done for many, many years, the state of the school district addressed to the Chamber of Commerce at their luncheon. In the spring, they have a state of the city, and, uh, in the fall, they have a state of the school district. And really, it's a very slightly, emphasis on slightly modified version of our celebrations and challenges that I shared with you, uh, a couple of weeks ago. But I think it's really important anytime that I can be in the community and presenting directly to a group of stakeholders. And of course, our business community has been so supportive over the years, we are proud to be, uh, members of the chamber, and of course, I serve on the chamber board. And so it's an opportunity for us to speak directly to chamber members about the school district, what's going well, what are some areas that we are looking ahead on, and, uh, I'm really excited to have a chance to present there tomorrow.
Yes, excellent, and I feel very fortunate that my schedule will allow me to be there. And if any other board members, um, want to be there tomorrow, um, it's at eleven-thirty, lunch at noon.
At the golf club, yeah.
At the Northfield Golf Club, um, and cost is only twenty dollars, because we are members and, um, Chamber Commerce members, and the food is actually very delicious. And you should probably be prepared for a master facilities question.
Or two, yes.
And then a shout-out to Todd Bornhauser, because he's actually been incredibly supportive of the school district. He, um, did put out, um, information to all Chamber of Commerce members about the community just strategic planning meeting and... And he attended as well. Um, and he's on, um, the Career and College Readiness Action Team as well. So he's been extremely supportive of the school district, so it's nice that we're able to do this. And, um, it was really, um, fun to be at the one that, um, Dr. Richardson did, because the community really loves to hear about what's going on in the school, because as you know, many of them don't have kids in our school. And so, um, they, um, they just really appreciate the opportunity to hear, and they're really engaged. And we also have to thank Benjamin Bus, because they, um, sponsored the lunch as well. So, yeah, and they'll have some people there as well too. So it's a, it's a really good, um, opportunity for you, so thank, um, thank you, Dr. Hillman, for doing that.
It's my pleasure.
Okay, National Merit Scholars Reception, coming a little bit earlier this year.
So you'll see that at the October tenth meeting, uh, we'll be having the National Merit Recognition Ceremony at six o'clock, uh, before the board meeting, uh, usually is in the upper cafeteria. We'll have some more specifics on that as we get closer. Uh, we do know that we have four National Merit semifinalists this year. We're awaiting the number of commended scholars, but, uh, really proud of us continuing to have a number of National Merit, many schools would be happy to have one, and, you know, we have four again this year, so we're really thrilled with that, and we invite you to come in. That's one of my favorite events of the year, listening to kids talk about teachers who made a significant difference in their life. It's really a, I think it's a very special moment, and I invite you to participate and, and to hear those stories. And have some cake, Joel usually gets some good cakes.
And good punch. Okay, excellent. Um, last item then is September enrollment report, which was in the table file.
Yes, and, uh, you know, I, I, it's one of those moments where I wish that Dr. Chris Richardson could report, because you know how much he enjoyed giving the enrollment report. And, uh, I think that when you see the bottom-line number, you're gonna say, some eyes, when Julie saw it earlier, her eyes got big, because, uh, at the end of the first week of school, four thousand thirty-five students. So if you remember last spring, Dr. Richardson's last enrollment report, and he said it was the first time in his twelve years where we had hit four thousand, and we're talking four thousand thirty-five at the end of week one. And so, uh, this is really a, a good piece for us here. Now, we all know that that changes throughout the year, so, um, in fact, we typically see that go down as the year goes on, though it's not, it's not been, you know, completely that way every single year, but we do know that, um, over the years, we'll see this go down a bit. But starting at four thousand thirty-five, uh, that's a pretty good place to be at the beginning. Now, that also does create some challenges, you know, because it, it does appear sometimes that they all go to the same grade level where we already have some significant issues. But I also think as you take a look at the second part of the report, you'll see that, um, you know, for the most part at elementary schools, our class sizes are in reasonable condition, especially after approving the fifth section, uh, at Sibley Elementary. And so you'll also see that, um, our high school, again, is at a very high point, and with three hundred and seventy-one stu, three hundred and sixty-one students uh, in the class of twenty-nineteen, um, that's pretty significant. So that's a, a large class, and then you'll see that the, the middle school, not too far behind where they were when they had that big class. And so, another pretty large class in eighth grade this year, with three hundred and forty-one students. So, um, we are happy with the news to begin with.
Excellent. Okay, any questions on that? All right, so, um, that concludes items for information, so future meetings, um, we've already touched on them, but just to recap, Monday, September twenty-second, from six to nine P.M., we'll do the strategic planning final work session in the High School Media Center.
Julie, I think that's actually a Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, well, I keep doing, I did that last time.
No problem.
Aye, aye, aye. All right, Thursday, September twenty-second. And again, I guess we can look for some information, um, that will, um, we will be utilizing that evening, um, yet again this week. So Thursday, September twenty-second, from six to nine P.M. Then, um, that Monday, September twenty-sixth, is a regular school board meeting. Um, moving into October, um, the reception for the National Merit Scholars will be Monday, October tenth, um, followed by the regular school board meeting at seven P.M. in the High School Media Center. Okay. So, um, that concludes all of tonight's business. So with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn, moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.